I don't know, I was taking it easy. I'm live right now, so... Did a little bit of mowing today. Did some mowing today. Around here. There's a regular meeting at 7?
It is 7.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Meeting starts at 7. So... Come out here, get some fresh air. I guess this is what's going on tonight. Hello, hello? How's everybody doing? If you don't mind, hit that thumbs up button. Hey, Kiki? Otter Creek. And the fire department. Hello? Howdy from Louisiana. Hi from North Carolina. Hey, Todd. Hey, Christie. We still got... 6:18. So... About 40 minutes. Hopefully the live lasts the whole time and don't cut in and out. I'm hoping. George? How you doing, George? Mr. George? From Fort Myers. That's awesome. Glad to see you on, George. Here at the town meeting. Uh, tonight, I guess everybody gets sworn in or... The new, new people. You know how this works. I'm new to all this. How you doing? Not ignoring you, man. I'm just live. I at least let people know I'm live, that way, you know? Something private they want to talk about. Nothing about politics, just a private conversation. I have no clue if he's coming or not. It's still early. I'm not sure. Thank you, Mr. George. I try to, I try to do the best I can. That's good, Rebecca, because I don't see that vehicle here, so... Doesn't mean he won't show up, but I, I don't know. I don't know. I'm gonna do my thing and... Mind my business, you know? Look at this again, see what's all on here. Not sure what this is, but for the people that are in the chat now... This is the agenda. If you have to go back and check it out, you can. And I guess there's... Ms. Belinda's is gonna be not working for the town hall anymore, or working from home. I don't know. Don't quote me on that. I just seen it on other channels and... I missed the last, uh, town meeting, so... That's when they talked about Ms. Belinda leaving, or working from home, or something like that. I might be totally wrong. You can't believe everything you see online, so... I just, uh... I did see it online, so... I don't know if it's true or not. And Ms. Belinda was in there. Sitting by her sister, so... I, uh... Can ask her myself, you know? People want to know. So how is everyone? 97 people in the chat. Are you in the chat?
Are you live?
Yes, ma'am. Hello, Mike. It's gonna be a long live. If this is a long town hall meeting, it's gonna be a long live, because I started... Almost an hour early. Which, I'll enjoy it with my YouTube family. Have a good old time. Hopefully this connection don't start acting up, and I don't see anybody complaining about my orientation, so I got that right this time. You can always catch it later. It is a beautiful day. There's only so much to look at here. I got my driver's license. Let's see here. So, the chat. Hello, Joy. Ms. Joy. Hello, hello. I got my driver's license. Nice. For any fighting, but I'm not gonna let nobody touch me, for sure. Back and forth. I'm gonna go check out the park. Y'all done seen this part of the Otter Creek a lot. Park's looking good. Richard's got it cleaned up. Richard's got it cleaned up.
Yeah, we intended on rolling it right through from one to the next, but being that it was advertised at 7, you know, we didn't do it that way. We don't want to do anything wrong, so...
Right, right. I'm live, just to let you know.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. That's Carl talking. I don't have the camera on, but there he is.
You know, I'm saying no matter what.
No, hell, you're good.
But you don't argue?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You don't argue, Mr. Like?
Yes.
Yep, just out here enjoying the...
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful day.
They were tearing me up yesterday.
Oh, yeah. And that's me too, yesterday. They had a, a meeting... Before this one starts. And I missed that one. I didn't see it posted. I may have missed it, I don't know. But there is the meeting where I guess the people get sworn in. Let me see if I can fix one of that. Guess what shirt I have on? Ray Bone Crusher. Thanks, Amber. You've been, you've been with me a long while now. All my members. Let me see here. Yep. Thanks, Mike. Hello, Norma. I missed you. Bone Crusher. Cool shirt, Thomas. Thank you, Todd. Love you too, Amber, always. Hope all is well. Waiting for the town meeting to start. Got here a little early, so... Don't know whose vehicle that is. I think that's, that one's them. Ms. Belinda's, Ms. Belinda's sisters. And so on and so forth. Mr. Carl's. He are the famous... Fire hydrant. Excuse me, y'all. This might be it for this meeting. I don't know, unless anybody else shows up. I guess this meeting was supposed to be held on the... 20th. Natural getting bad. What time is it? 6:30. 30 minutes. Y'all got any questions? Tried to catch them in the chat. Was going fast there for a minute. Today, I just... Mowed some grass for Mr. Richard. Went to Chief Land. That's about it. Hit that thumbs up for me, please. Good evening, Chuck. Feeling a lot better than I was a few weeks back. A month ago. Thank you for asking. Yes, that is great news. I don't see him here. He still could show up, though. I mean, there's still 30 minutes till the meeting starts. And he usually shows up 30 minutes, 45 minutes before the meeting. Most cases. Which, by now, he knows I'm here. Guarantee it. I'm live, and it's already gotten back to him. Both of them probably know I'm here already. Riding on the golf cart. Uh, I'll tell y'all a few things. Nothing ever happened in high school, so that's all made up. DJ Poop Pants made that up. Because that one night when he was out here? And he hauled butt in his car, and I got footage and film of it. He pooped his pants. He sure did. He pooped his pants. Okay, enough of that. He was gonna get licked like a candy cane, because he looked like one. Oh, by the way, how's them copyright strikes? You like them? Aged right now, but... Sometimes you just gotta be not your age. Ah, so, yeah. I haven't released this yet to too many people. Once again, don't use other people's footage. And you won't get copyright strikes. Or at least ask and get permission. Well, DJ Poop Pants... Did not ask permission, and if he did, he wouldn't get the okay to use my footage. And he got two copyright strikes. Two from me. You know, there's a lot of hard work put into these channels. I hate to see people lose their channels. And I don't want to do it to that man. I don't even know what his issue is with me. Never done nothing to him. He started picking at me first, making videos about me, and I let it be for a year. And then he started showing up to these meetings. And then that's where it started there. So... Yeah. Don't use other people's footage on YouTube, or you will get copyright striked. Anyone, anyone. And if you do have permission... One more strike on DJ's... Channel. One more. Three strikes, you're out of here. And he gets one more channel, he's out of here. And it's sad, because you, uh... Put in a lot of hard work and time into the people's, into your channels, and, uh... Just to use somebody else's footage, a... Two-minute clip of it, and get a copyright strike. So... And there's, he's using other people's footage right now. Pretty sure Rake could go in there and strike him if he wanted to. His channel would be deleted. Maybe even Lisa could. And this is all breaking news right now. That I haven't told nobody. I've told people, but I don't think it's been released online. He took my footage and used AI to change my voice. It was still my video. He just changed my voice. And he put a old TV-looking screen around it. The main part of the footage was mine. I recorded with my energy, my body, which made it my video. That's why he got the strike. I had emails from YouTube saying it was looked over by real people and automated computers. And both of them got removed. And... Pretty sure that's a copyright strike. So the same thing happened to the other channel that is still doing this. But not even gonna give her the time of the day. But it's all good. So, yeah. Don't use other people's footage. Because you can lose your channel real quick over it. Even if you got permission from them. And then you get, they turn on you, like a lot of other YouTubers fight, and they turn on you. They can go copyright strike that. So it's best not to use it. So, that's all I got to say about that. That's all I got to say about that. Look at there. Cherry, Trenton, Florida. I'm representing Trenton. We got 161 people in the chat. Let's get that thumbs up more. Oh, man, come on. Well, he has no trouble to start, because if you just ignore him, he can't touch me. I can just stand there, and he can talk. Because if he touches me... I mean... I'm gonna stand my ground. And I might go to jail. And I don't want to go to jail. At all. Or I may not. He put his hands on me, but hopefully none of that happens. I'm gonna say none of that's gonna happen, because I'm not here for that. I'm here for the town meeting. You know? I'm over here got, I'm here for the town meeting, y'all. Nothing going on. Got some people chatting over there. Alright. Hello, Oliver. That's right, Cat Lady. Keep my hands to myself, and that's what I plan on doing. Unless I'm being attacked by several... Or being grabbed, I'm gonna have to... Touch back. But other than, other than that... My hands are staying to myself. 6:41, y'all. Thanks, Trust First. I'm me. I try to be me. Some people like it, some people don't. You know, everybody has their opinions that... I can't please everybody in the world. And everybody has a right to not like me, or like me. Plain and simple. So... I miss that Cat Lady. What you said. There's no hitting going on, y'all. No hitting going on. John Boy. John Boy. Why you say that, buddy? Huh?